This is for the purpose of the hearing on a proposed Grundy County property tax levy for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. We'll wait, I think we'll do the pledge at the regular meeting, that's alright. And at this time, I would take your motion to receive and place on file the proof of publication of the notice of public hearing. It's published March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five in the Sun Courier and Grundy Register.
I will so move.
If anyone cared a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright. And then, at this time, I've taken a motion, I guess, to open the public hearing.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the public hearing is open, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, in favor of the property tax levy, or about the property tax levy? A public comment? In some public, would you like to speak? Any questions?
Yes, I will.
Okay. If you'd like to say your name, just if we can know.
Daniel Dyer, thirty one forty five West Fourth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. We have property out by day. And I did a little calculation here shortly. My social security went up two point five percent last year. And both pieces of property went up six percent on taxes. Somehow that doesn't calculate to me that. And I understand everything changes. But I heard you a while ago talking about with people losing their housing because of tax increases, etc. I don't know if that's truth. Because unfortunate, we've done okay, we're still taking nourishment. But it just seems like somewhere along the line, this steady increase over what we get increased, has to, has to come to a level point. And I hear you guys talking about the state legislature, etc. But I, I feel everything really starts at the ground level. Here and you guys, and enough uproar from us as citizens, etc., that they got in this. I may be all wet. You know, my, my income's not keeping up because I'm retiring with what the expenses are that we incur. I'm not in danger of losing my house, but just somewhere along the line, we've got to get enough gumption or enough loud voices to, to get this to start slowing down. Instead of twice the amount of income or taxes I'm seeing against my income, somewhere along the line, it's definitely level one. And I, I realize everybody wants a raise, taxes, my taxes, but expenses go up. I see on the agenda part that there's. I wonder how many times the cannon's been kicked down the road of not taking care of the county roads, etc. And this is city too, I go to every city council meeting, whatever. It's no different here than it is there. It's just nobody seems to listen to the, to the people. I won't say they don't listen, but nothing happens.
Well, you sound like a very concerned citizen, do you also attend the school board meetings?
No, I don't, but I should. And yes, I, I got a thing from Waterloo for the school board, I will be going there. I, I, I had, I have attended the ones they had about the new school and spoke out. I'm gutsy and I speak up. But yeah, I'm not in favor of that and now they got to cut two billion, two million dollars out of their, their operating budget that they're gonna build a new school. Not calculating in this old man's head.
Well, and we do try very hard and I honestly, I went through our budget last night line by line. And there's not a lot of, Grundy County is, tries to be very, very fiscally responsible. Some of the things that we do have to take care of, it comes from the state, they require us to do these things and we are not reimbursed as a county. And so that does hurt our overall budget as to what we have to, we have to pay for them, we don't get any reimbursement, we are required by law to take care of these things.
I guess another comment I would make a couple of years ago, the city of Waterloo gave all the, and, and they are, they are on a two or three year contract, but even the non-bargaining people got raised because there was a colo. Social Security Department said there was no COVID. No, wait a minute. Somebody's lying there. Because if there was a colo at the city, there had to have been a COVID information. This is, you know, and, and you probably have heard that statement too, but we've got to give this raise because of COVID. But yeah. We did social security. Section.
Yeah. Working across the different levels, it does make it difficult. But that's what we're, you know, very interested in hearing your comments.
One, if one, no, I want social security too. So. What about, the first thing that comes to my mind is your insurance.
I have got good insurance and it's inexpensive. It's inexpensive. Thirty nine dollars a month each.
Or what, what about all your, your property insurance?
Oh.
I.
Well. I guess I'm not unhappy with that either.
That's good.
And they treat us well, they paid for a brand new roof when we got hair damage.
Has it gone up?
Usually a hundred dollars a year.
No, we're cutting you with. Because that's, that's one thing, in, in our budget here, we have, we have liability insurance and property insurance and workman's comp and all that. We don't have much control on it and yet it goes up more.
I know last year, that was one of the biggest increases that we had as far as percentage was in insurance.
I, I don't long that in my head, but if I remember, I'll let you know. But, you know, it's out of labor. But they, you know, I think I paid a hundred dollars. My wife had open heart surgery with our medical, they paid two thousand dollars. Open heart surgery expense.
And it doesn't fuel you either.
No, but I'm saying, the companies I have gotten with, boy, I'm more than happy with that. They're treating me better than the county and the state and federal. Let me say that. That one sense wise.
Is that a supplement to your?
I, I have, we have a supplement. And they also take care of the, the Medicare part, so I don't have to go to different places.
So are you suggesting that at the city, county and school level, any salary increases should relate back to what the COLA increase is? Is that your suggestion?
That would be a starting point, but yet, that would be a starting point, but yet, when I'm told there was no COLA and then they say there was a COLA the same year, somebody's not telling me the truth. So if you want to base it on one thing, everybody's on the same page. But they weren't. That year at least.
Okay.
So yes, I, I would agree that, but then social security should go up at that same rate. Or everybody's pay increases. And, and I'm, I'm also a, a person that is very serious about merit raises. Not just a standard because you're a warm body and you're breathing, you get a raise and this guy over here is doing twice your work. Maybe a COLA is not, or maybe just a standard across the board, COLA thing is not, to me is not the answer, and I had my own business for a while. If a guy's doing a good job for you, you, you reward him a little bit better than the guy that's not doing it at that kind of work. And you have a good conversation with him, say, you know, pick it up or there's the door. And, and we don't absolutely always do that, I don't think, on city, county, state, federal level. You don't look at their performance, they're occupying a seat, they're still warm. They should get the same thing the next guy does? No. I don't agree with that. Everybody should be based on their own merit.
Well, Elon Musk is working on that.
Some of it too is a, if you got the union involved, you know, you can't really. Now, like in secondary roads, you got the union. Pretty hard to go by performance.
And then here, it's, it's, it's under departments, and so it does go through the department heads, I'm sorry to them, but no, we're, I'm, thank you for coming and, and stating your opinion, because that's what this is all about, we're really glad.
The unfunded mandates and those are some of them that we're trying to work with the state. They don't get reimbursed, those are the things that they say, okay, you're gonna do this and you're gonna pay out of paper. So that's just a list we'll look over here.
Okay. I'll bring up another one that's probably, one of you guys, I think it's tip. Yeah. Dylan. We're giving away more money than we take in and then we gotta borrow money and now we gotta pay for that over fifteen years and and that needs to, I've said that to a lot of people and I, I contacted a couple of them. You gotta get rid of the state people because they're the ones that let it happen. All that does is put one city against another competing. And Waterloo Cedar Falls, oh wow, big competition, who can give away the most money? And all they're doing is bankrupting citizens. I'll get off my.
No, but thank you very much for your comments.
That mandated deal.
Yeah.
It's probably the one, the one that seems to stick in my mind is this information that we sent out, you probably got last Monday or Tuesday, double sided on.
The mailing that came.
Mailing that came.
Well, yeah, I got it through the.
That.
Yep.
I think it cost us thirty eight hundred dollars for postage. Just for postage, that's not putting the time for you and you and Ellen to put it together, so that, that's just one thing that I.
That's another unfunded.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And so that's something we had to pick up, and as we were talking earlier, the information on it is actually incorrect because they, they assumed that your property, or your property valuations would go up ten percent. And so the information on there is actually not correct for Grundy County. So that is just a little bit of what we're dealing with, but no, we, we do thank you for coming in for your comments. Did anyone, would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am wondering about this, this document here. Apparently, the county, our school system and the city of Conrad all want some more money, is that what I'm looking at?
That's the document that we're, that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did everybody in the county get the same one?
They got one appropriate for their city, yeah, their city, their school district.
Okay. Every, every school district asked for more money or just dollars?
Yes.
Everyone.
Well, they haven't, their published budgets haven't been, their budgets, their new budgets haven't been published yet. So we don't know exactly, but a good guess would be yes.
But we know the county asking for money.
Because they haven't published, they haven't published, they haven't republished yet.
What's this then?
Didn't they pass them?
Proposed tax, and that's proposed tax is more, higher.
He wanted their certain. Yeah, there you go, they're, so they're.
Is it not gonna happen?
It's not. It's not finalized.
I'm looking at my, I guess this comes from the assessor's office, I'm looking at my tax statement.
Treasurers, yep.
In the over thirteen years that I've lived in Grundy County, I think there's been two years that I didn't have a tax increase. I'm looking at this one, this says that, that my proposed tax here is gonna be apparently sixty six hundred dollars. I'm already paying sixty seven hundred. So I'm not sure where these numbers are coming from. Current property tax, sixty three hundred, here's my bill for sixty seven. So if you want me, if it's sixty three hundred, I'll pay that now and you know, I know it, it seems humorous, but they do real numbers, it's my money.
Yes.
Six seven thousand dollars a year.
It only contains three of the funds, of the taxing bodies that that is, makes up your total tax statement. It doesn't include area schools, doesn't include, it does not include the assessor's office.
You know, and if that's the case, it should say that. Your explanation, if that's correct, should be a part of this. Well, I don't know, I challenge anybody in Grundy County to say, I got this and I understand it perfectly.
I would contact your state legislature and.
It's their fault?
The mailer is their fault.
The mailer is their fault, the mailer's not our fault.
Okay.
Alan's. We've tried.
Can't do anything about it?
We've tried.
You've talked to legislators? To fix that?
We've tried.
You tried and they said no?
They don't listen.
Everyone is saying no.
We, at the state level at ISAC, have had legislators in the room and we have tried to discuss this with them. And they feel that it is a way to inform the public. We would, we don't mind them informing the public as long as they would inform them with the correct information. And we do, we understand your confusion and your concern because we have the same ones, we really do.
I mean, you, you really do, but when I walk out the door, nothing's gonna change. It's gonna go up and up and up. I'd like one time for this body or all of us to say, okay, we're just not gonna do it. We're not gonna raise our budget this year, we're gonna live within our means, just like everybody that bathed in this road has. And you do too. But the county doesn't every year. You know, we live in a democracy, but this property like tax thing is a dictatorship. You tell us what it is, we have to pay it. There's no way around it. We just pay it, we pay it, year after year after year after year. And I would ask, when's it gonna stop? It's not gonna stop. On and on and on. And I really, I challenge you to say, okay, let, let's look at this and let's just go in household behemoth. Let's try to give them that extra money as opposed to raising these taxes, let's leave it in their household. One time. I have a question on assessors levy. Last year, two hundred and twelve thousand, next year, three hundred and five thousand, that's ninety two thousand dollars more, what is that? What is an assessor's levy? What does the assessor do with that money? Why does he need another hundred thousand in one year? Nobody knows it.
I don't think that's an accurate figure to begin.
That's what it says.
That's on his tax.
That's on your tax statement?
Right here.
Okay. Right?
Well, and that would have been probably from past years.
So we don't know the.
What, what year statement is that?
Well, it's.
The last one you got?
I guess so. This is the one that shows my current tax due, I think this is the most.
Here comes the assessor right now.
Assessor right now. Have you got his check? Can you tell me one, last year, we had a two hundred and twelve thousand dollar number here for your office and that goes to three hundred and five this year?
I can, because in many years, we carried over a lot of money that we didn't spend. And eventually that amount shrunk down to where we needed to levy.
What do you do with that money?
I pay myself, I pay my other full-time employee, we pay postage, we pay for continuing education. All of those types.
And continuing education would be things that are probably required, I mean, they're required, yeah.
Yeah, not everybody can step into forty three percent increase, ninety two thousand dollars in one year. I'm looking at my assessed valuation here. I got four hundred and eight thousand previous year, last year. The following year, from four hundred and eight to four hundred and seventy eight, my value, my value of my home, according to your office, went up seventy thousand dollars in one year. Is that right?
Yes, I think we talked about this last year.
Well, what was the answer then?
So the answer is, is that statewide, everyone's assessments went up in Grundy County.
Did everybody?
Everyone's assessments went up and it relates to what people are paying for property and what we haven't assessed then.
Is it an accurate statement that everybody in my neighborhood had a seventeen percent increase in house after house and a good house?
Yes, pretty relative.
Right on down the line.
Pretty relative to that, so a, a difference would be by the year that it's built. The style of home, square footage, that type of thing, but it's all gonna be relative to that amount.
But similar homes would be similar increases.
So the least expensive house in town may not have had a seventeen percent increase, higher end houses did?
No.
That's not true?
That's not true.
So they all had seventeen?
I was saying that it's not all as simple as saying seventeen, so if we did nothing and never increased these values in relation to sales, the state would come in and they would give twenty percent or whatever across the boards to your land and your dwelling.
Where have they done that at? You know, you know where that's actually happened?
Every odd year in the state of Iowa, for assessors that don't do this type of work, that happened. So in this county, I remember happening in two thousand and three, two thousand and five, I was not a assessor then. So we got equalization where a full class of property increased by that amount.
So if you don't do it, the state will, is that what you're saying, a hundred?
Yes.
Yes.
The Department of Revenue
Okay.
tells the assessor's office the value for all property houses and that has to be within ninety five to hundred and five percent of what the average sale prices that goes through.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Whatever that value is after that, whatever percent you just said, would you sell your home for that amount?
When I went to the board review, that seems to be like on your training, okay, if you have a problem with somebody, the first question you ask them, would you sell it for that? Second question, is that what you paid for it?
It's not in my training, that would be common sense, because what we're doing is solving for market value.
I'll consider that.
Yep, I haven't heard that before.
Well, I am at four hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Yep.
Okay. If you want to write a check for it, I'll consider it.
How large is your home and your in-ground swimming pool and your pool house? Is it really not worth four hundred and some thousand dollars?
Well, you tell me.
I just.
You seem to know a lot about it.
Okay, I think at this point.
Let's get a little out of control.
We're here to mainly talk about the levy.
I'm here to ask the question.
And you, no, you are free to ask questions.
Then that's how it's gonna go.
You are free. You are free to ask questions, if you'd like to go down.
Questions, but I can't, I wasn't part of.
If you'd like to go down to the assessor's office and continue to discuss with Mike about the assessed value of your home, you're free. We're at this point in time, we're here to discuss the levy, we do have another gentleman in the room, I don't know if you have any questions about the levy?
First of all, Mr. Dyer was kind enough to give us his name, what is your name? Frank what?
Hocker. I'm done.
Did you have any comments about the levy?
Yeah, one question.
And I guess, yeah, could we get your name?
Rick Lockhart, right there. This form, which I had already talked to Mr. Shilbrock about it earlier, and I understand where you're coming from, your state does a lot of stupid things, that's a different discussion. And you say contact your legislature, what would you individuals propose they do instead? What would be your recommendation to clean it up to make it so that it's more understandable and or for use?
Well, to have the correct numbers on it would be helpful.
You'd have to probably change that date until budgets are established. I'm at, I don't know, I'll, I'll call them.
First of all, for two years now, they've required us to send out two public notices for hearing, public hearings on our budget. The first one pertains to this one, which is totally bogus to what our current county, you know, that's one thing that I would tell them, they don't, in fact, LJ and I ran a meeting the other night and Makers, unless, Josh, Josh, Josh Makers was at. We pressed upon him, you know, that, this is an unneeded mailing.
Well, to his point, would you say it was dollars or something for that mailing? That makes absolutely no sense.
That's what we told Makers.
Was it thirty eight?
What's the point?
Then we're not allowed to put our information in, like the state puts the information.
It's the state puts the information, none of our information is in this mailing.
So my starting point would probably be I'll, I'll call the appropriate personnel or people, individuals and say, why are we doing this? And I'll rattle their case a little bit and see what they got to say.
Well, that would be, yeah, that's.
Everyone would be helped with that.
They increased the valuation, it shows that the percent change is thirteen point eighty eight or fifteen point three five, it's actually five point one and three point six in Grundy County.
Right.
So I mean, it's misleading to the taxpayers. So I mean, it's misleading to the taxpayers for one thing.
And that's what I'm after.
And yeah.
I'll talk.
You know, if we could have the correct information on there, but we also feel that, you know, we are capable of letting you know when this public hearing is and letting you know what the, the rate is and.
Yep. Goodness.
And, you know, to get that out there.
Well, and I want to remind people what Don said, that if we don't raise valuations, the state will do it at a much higher rate than we do it. Nobody likes raising taxes, nobody likes paying bills, but it's fact.
And if we do it in count, it will be more accurate, it won't be an across the board, I mean, it's nor each of your properties. So.
So the public hearing for our actual budget is April, what, twenty one?
Well, we'll set it today, but that's what we're looking at.
Twenty first, okay, public hearing on our actual county budget for the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Are you welcome to come to that?
Alan, is there anyone online that would like to speak? Do we have any, I guess if you do, even put it in the chat to see if they wanna.
They got it under chat.
You said April twenty one?
Yes.
Tentative, tentative, yep.
Yeah.
We will.
No, no.
It's not a mailing, but it will be published.
The budget will be published in the papers prior to that, yes.
Who gets one of those yet?
But yeah, it will be on the county website also. No, okay. So at this time, we have no more public comment. Any of the board have a comment that they'd like to make yet? Otherwise, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make such a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you all for, I mean, and for your comments.
Thank you.
That's what this is about, we do appreciate it.